Good evening, everyone. If you joined us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary had to click her all along.
What would you like me to do with it?
I'll take it, thanks. I don't get to click her out.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for August 20th, 2019, 6:00 PM start, and a full board in the House tonight. We've done the pledge. Have all board members seen the orders?
Yes.
Approval of Select Board minutes of August 6th. Any corrections, deletions?
Move we approve is printed.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mary, seconded by John Paul. For discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Coming around. Questions from floor, public comment, anyone on Howard Burgess? Come on up. How are you doing tonight, Howard?
Good, thanks.
Good.
Fine.
What do you got?
Question I have tonight is to do with building renovations.
Okay.
Specifically, the Lister's office.
Okay.
I'd just like to know, is there anything that's going to be affected in the Lister's office? I know you got a lot going on in the Clerk's office.
Yeah, so-
We'll talk amongst of switching our door around and all that stuff, and that's what I want to find out.
So it was mentioned to the Building Committee of Joe Donardo and I that for new state-of-the-art regulations for emergency entrances and exits and possibly ADA compliance, that the Clerk Treasurers Office might require a door, a second door, and that there was a very, very preliminary discussion that maybe it made sense to put a door in between your two offices. No decision has certainly been made, and we've hardly had a discussion on it yet. So I don't think we're anywhere close to making that type of decision, but that was the conversation that came up.
I think it was in the specs that we sent out for bid.
Was it in the specs?
Yeah.
It is.
I think that also said that it was a possibility.
That's an, I think that's an option.
Okay.
Yeah. The fellow that was here, he said that under the new rules for OSHA, or Labor and Industry actually, or whatever the fire codes are, that the offices should have a second means of egress, so.
Isn't that if you change-
What?
Isn't that if you change the structure of the room itself, the outlying four walls?
It's if you do any renovations on any building. Once you do renovations on a building, you have to bring them up to code.
Well, I mean, certainly putting down carpet and paint wouldn't require a code upgrade.
Right.
So I think there's gotta be some definition or some-
And I don't see a big issue if we put the door between the two offices, just, or do you?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Number one, the space on that wall that we've got, I mean, it's gonna really take away some space that we've got.
Okay.
And certainly, we really don't want it. It just doesn't seem to make sense either way from at one point, you were just gonna put one door for us going into the Clerk's office, and that meant we would have to go into the Clerk's office to get into our office.
Yeah, we did away with that.
And that wasn't, that wasn't good.
That went away.
So that went away. So now you, we really don't want that door if there's any way that the cabinet space that we've got and everything.
Yeah, we just got you some new files or cabinets, and that's the wall they went on.
That's whoever they are.
Yeah.
That whole wall is filled with those cabinets. And it's just, I don't see the need for it, unless it was something that OSHA came up with. Yeah, but I really don't see the need for the benefit of people working in this building, you know, for us to do our jobs.
Yeah, if we do have to have two doorways, maybe we can fashion two along that wall in some way, like in a U-shaped entrance to it.
We'll just have, I think you just get somebody here from the Building Department, have them look at it and tell us what we need to do.
Yeah.
But it actually takes away space in the Clerk's office, too. It takes that wall space away there as well.
There's nothing there.
But I knew it was off and on. I was led to believe that it had been dropped, and then I saw this other sketch that was also, that's why-
Well, until you spoke to me, I thought it, I didn't think it was part of the project either, until you alerted me to it.
I didn't either.
I thought it was, you know, out.
So we should, Bill, contact somebody from Labor and Industry and ask them to-
So even if they do, why can't they put two doors coming out into this hallway from the Clerk's office?
But you're talking two ways.
Well, you're talking about cutting through the closet there?
Yeah. It's-
Well, it's affecting them, but not them, and their-
It may be both offices, Sharon. So I want you to start this. We'll see. We could sit here and guess all night long. Just get somebody that does this for a living. They'll tell us if we need to or not.
Yep, that's a good idea.
You know, they talk about windows that are means of egress. So if those windows were to meet the standards for opening a window and be able to jump out or get out in the case of an emergency or something, then we may not have to do anything. Your office might be a little trickier, because that's a long drop.
What about those ladder things that you throw out the window?
No, it has to be permanent. If it's gonna be a code requirement, it'll have to be-
Has to be attached to the floor, right?
Yeah. No, those work for houses. They don't work for public buildings. So we could sit here all night and beat this up. We'll just wait and see if some-
Last week, when I saw the truckload of furniture show up downstairs, I thought, whoa, wait a minute. Am I gonna see a door going, a hole in the wall here or something, so that's why it's-
It was a suggestion. We haven't nailed it down one way or the other, whether it's gonna happen or not. And the, one of the factors would be whether or not there's room enough to do it. If we're forced into doing it, then we'll try to make some accommodations. If not, we won't do it.
Why don't we put you and Marcia on the mailing list for committee meetings on the building? That way there you- Bill, could you make a note to do that, please?
Okay, Howard, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bill, sweet. What do you got, Bill?
A few things for you. So first up, I put the agenda items again in there for you.
Oh, yeah.
Number one.
Yep. So this Friday morning, we have the Water and Sewer Committee meeting scheduled on Rambury Road, starting at 10 o'clock, and received feedback from several of the businesses down there already and people that can be there. You have on your desk actually a letter from one of the property owners who couldn't be there, but is very much in support of the project, so you have that.
And the feedback so far, is it positive or just?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. Good, 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 good.
So that's a letter from Mr. James McGlothlin.
Yeah.
Okay.
So obviously, there's the one there with a few things to go over. For finance, there's a couple of things the auditor's gonna be available next couple of weeks to meet, if you wanted to do that, too. But the personnel one, there's some things we gotta go over, so that'd be good to get coordinated.
John Paul and I can schedule something for next week.
Okay.
Number two and the, going down the list there, that was by request. That's all the documentation for the Act 250 permit.
This is really good. Thank you very much.
So.
This'll be useful for-
Yep, and there's lots of correspondence to go along with it, so. Okay.
Thanks, Bill, for that.
Just for your records.
Has the Chief Dumas seen this? Okay. It's just all of our Act 250 permit related to the mall.
I'll give you all mine.
Yeah.
It's all yours, no problem. So, yeah, so that's all set. So a couple of things under new business that came from the Building Committee meeting. There's some items in the packet that are for those items. You have the minutes from the Building Committee meeting on there. Did you want to go over that now, or?
No, we'll wait for that.
Okay. So we'll hold off on, so that covers three, four, and five. Six and seven are just letters from local organizations about donations and appropriations we've made there. Number six is from the Foley Cancer Center. That's in response to the donation we made for Mark Foley from the townwide celebration.
Yep, that's great.
And then the one from ARC. They sent a thank you letter for their allocation. And then the last one is for-
Excuse me just a minute on this. Do we consider this the request for it to be put on the ballot? Or is this just a, because way down the bottom it says, "Please consider including ARC on your 2020 budget." I don't really think this is, but did Kirsten get a copy of this, just in case? Okay, so you might want to do that, and I'll put this in my town report file.
Okay.
Should we have Bill reach out to them and just let them know, "Hey, we got your letter. Thanks a lot, but later in the year, we're gonna expect a more formal letter?"
I think Kirsten does that, if she doesn't get something in from folks.
Typically, I have been contacting them. We've had a conversation with that last year.
Yes.
So I made sure that I do this, what you want me to do.
Great.
But, yeah, usually they don't start coming in until the end of October or January or November, so.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just don't want them to think that that's all they need to do, and then they don't get on.
All right. And then number eight was from Byron. That came from from correspondence he was talking about from the Water and Sewer Committee, so that'll be for later.
You know, it actually makes sense, Bill, since you're a pretty integral piece of A and C and D. We should probably go to that in our new business.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and take care of that.
All right.
So that'd be three, four, and five in your, I'm sorry, three and five in your packets.
Yes.
I guess three A and three B, actually, Bill?
Yes. So we had talked at the Building Committee meeting about the phone system here, and I had gotten, I had got two quotes from them for the work, and one's from a new vendor and one's from a current vendor. And what we talked about at the meeting was APC services.
And can you just briefly bring the board, remind them what exec we're talking about here and why we're talking about it?
Before you do that, though, is the other bid, where's the other bid?
It should be right behind that.
It's three B.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a little, the presentation, that's why I wrote on there, because there was nothing on there that actually said where it came from. So that's for a replacement of the phone system here in the building. The one we're using has kind of reached the end of its life. We've had some challenges with calls not being able to be answered properly. Voicemails can't get left when somebody's on the phone. The Police Department has three desk phones in their office. The current phone system only allows incoming calls to ring at one desk. So if somebody's in the office and they're not at that desk, they have to walk around to go into the phone if somebody calls in, so it's not really ideal. This one would actually allow the Police Department to make phone calls on their cellphones and make it look like it's coming from the office, so they can keep their cell phone numbers easier that way. But this covers the whole office. It's new phones, new hardware downstairs, and all the things we need to make it happen.
And the discussion was to take this money from the capital improvement fund, because this is a capital improvement of our of our phone system.
Yeah, both of these total over our $5,000 trigger on the purchasing policy, which says we should be going out to bid with these.
So-
Are one of these a preferred vendor?
One of them is a current vendor, and the other one is a new vendor. There's not many that do this kind of service. So I can see about getting other ones, but that's why I did get one from our current vendor, too. But our current one, the service is included from APC. The other one, we have a per trip and per hour fee, and they come from Middlebury. APC's out of Rutland, so we tend to get a little faster turnaround on that.
So I guess the question is, do we go out to bid and observe our purchasing policy?
We could do it. You just may not get any more.
I know, I know.
We know we may not get any more response, but that would keep us in line with it. Can, I guess-
You can do it. I can, I can-
But you just said the one out of Middlebury charges per trip.
Yep.
The other one doesn't.
Right, it's just that we've solicited two bids from two contractors or two companies, and technically, we're supposed to put stuff over $5,000 out to bid and what.
So then we kinda have to.
You know, if you're gonna stay in line with that, you kinda gotta do it. You may not get it. We may not get any additional responses.
Let's put it out to bid.
And then just let these two companies know, Bill, that we decide, you know, we have to go this route to abide by our own rules.
Problem. Uh, okay.
Do we need to have Billy get back to us with the whole schmear? Or we just let him do it and get it done, and so it's done before?
I'd just say, he's the resident expert on the subject. I'd just say let him do it.
Right, I mean, if he did it within, say, the next week or so and gets it out, so maybe in a month, we will have any, we could get this wrapped up in a month.
All right, so-
Just let him handle the timeline and do it.
So I move that we authorize Bill to do the bid specs and get this-
Set up a timeline.
Get this out, set up the timeline.
Motion by Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John Paul for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks, Bill.
Letter C, board to discuss migrating the office productivity software to Office 365.
So you don't have, there's no paperwork for that. That's just something Pat and I have been talking about. So we currently have seven workstations in the office, and we use three different versions of Microsoft Office across those seven computers, which has made things somewhat challenging in terms of support. In talking with Pat from Vermont Digital, we talked about moving to Office 365, which would be one version of it for everybody. It's the same version for everybody, and it updates by itself. The cost is $1,950 annually. So we have planned to purchase two new computers every year for our regular workstations. Those computers each need a version of Office at $249 each. So of that $1,950, $500 of that we would be saving, because we wouldn't be offsetting that, because we wouldn't be purchasing it with the computers. That 365 also includes email hosting service, which we do right now through Image Setters, at $390 a year. So we spend $890 a year right now that would not be, have to keep being spent. It would be part of that total $1,950. So we'd be spending about $1,100 a year more than we are right now. But going forward, it would make things more consistent in the office, and it's just some, Pat's on board with it, but he wanted to, we wanted to bring it to you guys.
Are there any other programs that need to be upgraded?
The ones we use the most are all wrapped up in Office. So this is Outlook, Word, Excel, PowerPoint, everything.
Okay.
And, for example, Kirsten's PC has to get replaced this year, because her version of Windows, the support expires this year.
Yeah.
So they're not having the support anymore, and that's an old version. So there's three or four past at this point from where she's at.
Yeah, what's the, what's your-
I was just gonna add on to that. Like, right now, Susan and I are using completely separate versions of Windows. So Pat had to come in and set up her computer, so that she has two separate types of my printer that she can print to, so she can use specific things with it without messing me up, so I can still use my printer.
So Windows, so that's separate?
Yes.
And are we current then, if we, once you get yours, are we current on Windows?
Hers and mine are the oldest ones at this point, and those are the ones in the rotation for this year, for this budget year.
Okay.
So we're holding off on that, because we need to, if we are going to go to 365, we don't need to spend the $249 on each of our computers.
Okay.
If we're not gonna do that, then we need to do that. So Pat's just waiting at this point.
This is gonna cover police, you guys.
The police have their own software. That's-
Cover you?
Yeah. Yeah.
Howard's.
Howard, Marcia, myself, Kirsten, Susan, yep.
What does Byron use? Okay.
But his email is part of this, so he can be part of that, too, and that's-
Put that into the 53, do you, to get it going?
The $1,950 includes, it's a per user charge. So it's a per month, per user charge, but they do it as an annual payment. So that's the annualized amount for all 13 email accounts we have right now. So like, that includes all of your email accounts, and it has to go all as one. So that's part of that, which actually makes it easier on our end for your email, but it doesn't really change much what you're doing right now, so.
If this passes tonight, take the note that we need to remember to include it in the next budget.
Yes.
We need to increase that line by $1,100 annually.
This would, well, like, we're talking about with Pat having to come and do the service, like, that was a, it's gonna be a $110 charge that this would not, we wouldn't have to worry about that anymore. So some of those things are gonna be offset by that.
Kirsten.
Question real quick. This was, you know, things that access to all the different ones away at, like, elections and things like that, right? So that's actually very helpful in the context of asking random questions.
Yep.
Yeah.
So is there a motion?
I move we approve the, wait, let me make the motion first. I move we approve the proposal to upgrade to Microsoft 365.
Motion by Mary. Is there a second? Sharon, for discussion. Kim?
It would be on that PC in there as well. So it would be, we'd put it on all of the PCs here at the office.
All right, and if I'm obviously not in the office, I have to operate from a distance. How does that all work? Am I guaranteed connection anytime I need it to this? That's, you know?
I can never guarantee a connection, but the connection won't be different than what you have now.
All those are in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, and the handles A and C.
And then this one, this is-
You have a sheet for B, which is number four in the packet.
Okay. So let's go to B from the Royal Group.
So this was part of the safety grant through VLCT. This work was, we included it in the grant total, so it's just a matter of whether or not we want to go ahead and actually have Royals do it. So this was for a smoke detector in the vault upstairs and one downstairs. We would pay for this, and then this will be eligible for 50% reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by John Paul, seconded by Joey for discussion.
Yeah, I remember the discussion. I was surprised to see downstairs is included.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of valuable stuff there, too.
That's where all the personal documents-
Yeah, I know. I've been down there a few times. Actually, I started title searching down there.
Really?
Because that's where it was. Listen, no, I don't have any problems. Just, I know the earlier version was a sprinkler or some kind of, not a sprinkler system, but an inert gas.
Suppression system.
And we're not doing that, just to be clear.
That's a different thing.
Okay, so I'm fine with the smoke detection.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
You can sign that one, Josh. Thank you. Okay.
Did we ever talk to them about the bill for that door lock?
I did not get ahold of them about that yet, no. Did we?
Hate it, but-
We did, okay.
That should be a phone call to them.
I will, I'll make that phone call. We've had work done. I called another company for a similar issue, and they did not, they didn't handle it, replaced. They just used some silicone grease, and 15 minutes with a $55 bill was done.
Right, versus a $300 bill.
Four.
$400 bill. Right. Can you work on that for us?
I can.
Thank you.
All right. For under new business, D is number five in the packet from Image Setters. So this is some work that they have talked about doing to keep developing the website. It's quite a few little projects. It's just a matter of what we wanted to do and have a direction for them to go. None of it's very expensive, but it's definitely some good things moving forward. There's some new templates they have, and I went and met with them, and they showed me some of their ideas, and they look really nice. It's just a matter of if we want to have them keep moving forward. We also had talked about some changes to the Fire, Police, and Rec pages to make them easier to manage in a newer format. So it's just a matter of if we want them to move forward or not.
Did you know that when I was looking there a couple of weeks ago on the website for a copy of the energy plan, it was very cumbersome to try to find?
Yeah, so that's-
That's something that's gonna be fixed?
So that's part of what we were, I was talking with them about. What we did when we came up with the new is we largely moved the form of the original one over with some visual enhancements and updates. This is going to bring in some more, make it a little more functional and a little more friendly to use and-
Do we have the tax payment schedule on our website?
We have-
We don't, so we should add that.
Okay.
Right, because people are always saying that, like, you know-
Yep, so we have, we've added pages like for voters and some tax payment things. So, and that's, as we go along, we're finding, okay, we should have this and have this, and some of these new things, like these templates, will look better.
Just a schedule.
Yeah, that's-
Just the tax payment schedule.
That's easy to do, yeah.
So we just authorized 360, okay?
Yep.
And there was some mention that you made that it would replace something from Image Setters?
So we pay them right now to host our email service.
Okay.
So we, they wouldn't do that anymore.
Okay.
So that cost would come out.
But this is just, there's nothing in here.
Right, and there's nothing in this about, right, this is just, right, exactly, yes.
Okay.
And it's, at the high end, it was like $900 to do everything, and at the low end, it was, I think, like around $600 to do everything. So they're pretty reasonable. I mean, when we looked at different companies to redo it, I mean, they were far and away the least expensive one. So they can work on one or whatever.
What is our, Billy, so we budgeted $2,000 for this fiscal year for the website. What is our annual fee right now with them? Do you remember?
Well, what we have coming out of there is actually the email and the website. So that's about $63 a month is what we're paying to them, I think, is what that comes out to be. Because it's for the webpage hosting and the email hosting.
That's all we pay a month, is $63 for both?
Yeah.
Or why we budgeted so much for it?
Well, because that was part of the development, is because we had planned-
Continue to develop me.
Yeah, we had planned to pay those costs and planned for some future development, so.
So did you have, I'm sorry if I missed it when I was trying to look up in the book here, but did you have recommendations of sections you thought we should do, or you think we should do all of them, or?
Well, I mean, I think we're gonna get to all of them. You know, the, the, the other day, after we posted the job opening for the Police Department, a little while later, they gave me the way to look and see the usage of our website. And the Clerk's office is like far and away the first one, but the Police Department was like close second, and then Recreation was third behind them. So, and that was actually, I found that out after they had given us the recommendations of which ones we should do, and which was Police and Rec and another one. So I think they're all worthwhile, and I think, you know, we are getting actually quite a bit of traffic to the site. So I think it's a worthy thing to do, and it's been good so far, and it's just gonna make things, like you said, you know, trying to find things on there is a little difficult. So this is gonna give us some a little easier user experience.
So I move we approve all of the projects that Image Setters is proposing its time.
Motion by Mary, seconded by John Paul. Discussion? That would be all of the projects on this two-pager that was submitted in our packets. For discussion?
Good idea.
Good idea?
That was a good idea, the other guy.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Motion passes. Thanks, Bill. Number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Yep.
Everything in your pack has been handled, except eight. We'll wait for Byron. What else you got, Bill?
On your desks is an email from Carl Ron about Carmel Place. They have not been able to locate the as-built plans as requested and are asking for a waiver.
So they should go to the Highway Committee for their next meeting. I did tell Carl we'd talk about it tonight. He emailed Bill and I last night. Go to Highway with it?
Yeah, because there's other stuff we're gonna have to do if we don't have as-built plans. So we need to talk about that.
Yeah, and there's some fill issues down there.
Okay.
With that road.
Okay. You also have the calls for service from Chief Dumas, and Kevin responded back with his feedback on the solar agreement with Green Lantern.
So I'd like to ask the board to consider having Kevin draft up his response. He tells us what we should be thinking about, but I'd like to see him actually do the response. So I'd make that motion that we asked him to do.
Motion by John Paul, seconded by Joe to ask Town Council to draft a response in regards to his comments about our proposed solar project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes.
That's everything I have.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything for Bill? Very good.
Just a, a com, a building committee, there's, uh, something on the back about the monument out front and I just wanted to mention that Chris Kiefer Choffey is willing to, if we ever put together a committee to work on that, she would like to be part of it.
Okay. I did talk to Marty Wasserman and his wife and they're working on a plan for some landscaping out there to make that a little prettier.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for pointing that out, Mary. So that handles A, B, C, and D in, uh, new business. And let's go to Barbara's absence, let's go to Kirsten Hathaway, Town Clerk and Treasurer. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I don't have much, so I'll be quick. Um, I have one liquor license that I would like you all to sign, please. Midway Oil, um, they're just changing a name, so they have to change their license. And I did have, um, Ted and Lynette check it earlier and they said that it was good, so.
Okay.
Is there a motion, John?
Move to approve.
Motion by John, seconded by Joe, for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. What did you change your name to?
Midway Oil. I don't know, they, they're. I think it was like Mobile Mart or something.
Okay, what else you got for us?
Um, so we do need to have a finance committee meeting. Um, Andrew is gonna be in on the fourth. He's also gonna be in on the eighteenth and nineteenth to work on the audit. I didn't know which day worked better for the both of you.
The fourth of September?
Yes.
The Wednesday, the Wednesday after our next select board meeting. John Paul, does that work?
Sure.
Okay.
Work for you guys.
Josh, what time you wanna do it?
Ten AM?
Sure.
I'll let Andrew know.
Will you warn that, Bill? Please. Thank you.
Um, tax bills are out, um, I'm gonna have the tax signs out later this week, um, cause I'm gonna be out of the office next week. And we'll be closed for lunches because of that, but we've had quite a few people come in and pay taxes, which is a good sign.
Yeah, good.
What's the due date?
The due date is September tenth. So we still have a little bit of time.
I gotta say that RSVP people who come in are great fun.
I love them.
Boy, they work away. Big thanks to RSVP for helping out with the taxes. Did, did the Highway Committee help or the Highway?
Not this year.
Not this year.
So Jim, Jim did come in.
Jim came in, yes.
I came in.
And his wife.
I came in to eat two of their donuts.
Yes.
Jamie and I came into work, so.
I spoil them, I, I go to Jones's, so.
Nothing out of you, Chief.
Thank you. I think that's all that I had, though.
Thank you.
Alright, very good. Who's up next? Mike Rowe. There he is. Exceptionally early tonight, I appreciate that. Good, healthy discussion about, about youth and athletics.
Nice, healthy discussion.
Um, I don't have much, uh, pool is closing on Saturday. School starts Wednesday.
Pool closes Sunday, right?
School starts Wednesday.
We're having a concert Saturday night.
Okay.
The last day of the pool is Saturday. We have a concert Saturday night.
Technically it closes on Sunday. It's closed Sunday.
We're splitting hairs. Okay, yes, we're open Saturday.
Oh.
Anyway, whatever. You're robbing us a day. I'm not. My question, um, like I told you before, I will be hopefully back, but I am dropping off my baby at school and I don't know what time I will be back, um, depending on waterworks and all that. So, uh, my question is, Joe, were you gonna do the tent again? Were we planning on asking for the tent again like we had for Town Line Celebration?
Did we ask him?
There right now.
See? Well, I just wanted to add that.
Joe, Joe agreed to bring his tent.
I'm glad we did. Gladly gave him so much notice.
Good work lining that up, Joe.
So whatever works.
We gotta go take it down, cause it's still up on the hill from the wedding. We haven't gone up after that one.
Just let me know any, any day I can, um, let you in and you can set up early. Yeah, the show's Saturday, so. Any day works for you this week, just let me know, we can let you in and.
I'll get my crew, yeah. We'll, we'll probably just go take it down and put it up.
But we do obviously want some kind of a tent, I'm assuming, for the show.
Anyone looked at the weather for Saturday?
It's gonna be nice.
It's supposed to be bad. Nice and cool, not, not like hot, like seventies.
Cool.
So it should be nice. Um, other than that, soccer's gearing up, uh, everything else is kind of, you know, going the way it's going. We had a nice meeting, I'm sure that Sharon will, that's part of the rec committee on the, on your agenda, so we can talk about that now if you wanna do that.
Go for it.
Go to the rec committee meeting minutes?
So we met, uh, I don't have the minutes, but we met last Tuesday, ten o'clock. We had a whole bunch of people in attendance. Howard was there, uh, Highway Commissioner was there, JP was there, Sharon popped in. Is there anybody else there? I thought there was one or two. Anyway, so we came up with our, uh, idea for, um, the Army Corps of Engineers. With Bill's help, we drafted a letter, with Byron's help, he did a Google Earth, and then we gave it all to Howard and Howard sent it off to, um, Mr. Dotson and we're just waiting, we had a couple of, uh, questions that we re-answered during this week, so we're just waiting at this point to hear back from him.
I saw where he read my message, I sent, I sent it back in to him, I didn't get information, so. He's supposed to be coming, stopping Saturday.
So we should have a better idea once they go through and then if we're gonna get passed on up through. We did talk about, um, funding because we will have to pay for the pavilion piece and any other kind of, I don't know what other scope that they would, that we would need to pay for if we wanna run electricity and things like that out to the spot during the construction period. If we're gonna do the, um, drainage at the same time, there are some fees that might be, uh, that we need to be prepared to spend. I don't know if they're gonna figure out what it costs to build a pavilion, cause we agreed to the pole barn type style, um, and we agreed to twenty by twenty-five. So I think, I don't know who comes up with that figure. They will do that? Okay, and so then we'll wait for them to see how much money that we will need to expend and so my question that we had at that meeting was, where would we find that money?
So they will do, they will do the work, they will build the pavilion if we.
We just gotta provide the materials, but you're looking at probably.
We really.
It's good.
Forestry money.
I mean.
There you go. It's gonna be, but you'd be looking at twenty, twenty-five thousand in materials.
We had, what do we, we had, we have fifteen, twenty grand left in that account, right?
Which account are you talking about?
We set aside the forestry money for Northwood.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was more for Northwood itself.
This is close enough.
This is rec still.
This is rec.
I get it, I just don't wanna tap that when there's a lot that's still to be done up there as well.
Well, we, we own, we own two parks and we're sitting on money that we, that we have.
I understand.
And this is a gift that we've been given by the Army Corps of Engineers.
What about the, uh?
I understand that. So we might have to make a decision.
And then supplement or figure out something else.
It's sitting in an account, we're not doing anything.
It, it's sort of committed, I mean, it's part of the, the old surplus thing.
It's part of what?
The old surplus thing, so however we agreed to use that, you know, the cash to open and the whatever.
Yeah.
It's not a separate.
I thought there was that money from what they, we call the mead fund or whatever, and it was like seventy-five thousand dollars in there, whatever.
Well, well, there you go.
Or fifty, I mean, I, I think we need to look into that. To me, this is a perfectly good use of a timber sale money.
Yeah, no, we're all in agreement, we should do it, we just gotta find the way.
That's my only question.
I think what we have to do is find a way.
Well, let's find out how much it is.
Kirsten, we need a couple of options for the next meeting?
Okay.
Thanks.
Alright. Yeah, I just want, I, we're gonna do it, we just wanna make sure that we go from the right spot. We're all in agreement with that. This is a no-brainer and.
Can I ask about no parking signs? Are there any posted so that people aren't parking?
There's three or four right along the road.
They park under the signs.
That's what I was wondering.
They'll park right next to the sign.
Yeah, okay.
And they'll open it, hit the sign that says no parking, then get out and walk.
And then they complain that there was a sign on the.
Well, what it's gonna take is a few.
Pay for their door.
You know, them being told, and then if they don't, then you, you write them a get.
Eddie's signature or his crew.
Yeah.
After they get a couple of signatures, they'll, they'll learn.
Okay, so the chief is on it?
Yeah, we have, we've talked about that.
Okay. Very good.
Does that help you out?
Ed, you're not saying anything, you're just.
Not a ticket?
Yeah, I don't think we're, we're not looking to get cars towed.
No, you're talking about getting a municipal ticket system in place, yeah.
Okay.
Another, another thing for the Police Committee to research. And do, because you can have all the rules you want unless you got a little teeth with it, they're just.
You gotta do enforcement once in a while.
Yeah, yeah.
As unpleasant as it might be for the people.
Right in the middle of a game, somebody goes over there and tows the car.
Well, we don't, yeah, no, I'd rather, easy now.
And then you put compliments to Joe DiNardo.
Yeah.
Whatever, I don't care. If you make rules, if, I mean, if people.
I would, Joey.
Um, Bill has it, he's gonna make a couple copies.
Okay.
Other copies, yeah. We also got DVD of, uh, the pictures from seventy-two when the park was created as it is now or expanded, whatever it was before, um, is now, so hopefully the plan's gonna look really nice and they'll be able to help us out.
Wow, what an opportunity.
And it's a great opportunity, so.
Yeah.
Moving forward, that's, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you.
Alright, sir.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Bill, would you add to the Police Committee the, um, municipal parking enforcement ordinance discussion? I guess that's what it is. And anything else that we should be?
We're gonna name it the Joe DiNardo.
Enforcement.
That's fine.
Thanks.
Uh, Byron Hathaway.
I don't have a whole lot here for you this evening other than just some announcements. We did, uh, find all of the manholes along the railroad tracks from Seward Road to Windcrest Road and they are marked with a, uh, marker. And we have GPS coordinates for all of those as well as dimensions.
Was that one Byron there that right opposite the one that's under the railroad tracks? Was that in fact, doesn't that one have holes in it that cover?
Took two days, but we found it.
Yep.
And, um, you know, it was under vegetation, but we did find that and it does, it is a perforated cover. It's in a spot, I, you're not gonna get a lot of water in it, but at some point in time, it should have a new cover on it. Um, the important thing, which was the other thing to discuss for a minute, um, that manhole is, you wanted me to run a camera from there to the other manhole? I'm not gonna do that till you clean that manhole. And I don't know how you're gonna get to it because it's a two-hundred-foot height through, uh, huh, uh, brush and whatever else that's over the top of your head. Now, I don't know if the Fire Department's got a booster line on any of these older trucks or still. If we could drag a booster line down there, we might be able to, you know, carefully flush that and push all the sediment across and hopefully it keeps going.
Yeah, cause you can't open the one that receives it, cause it's under four feet of stone.
Next one above it to make sure everything's coming through.
Yeah.
But, uh, that was my only suggestion to do that, cause you're not gonna get a vac truck down there to suck it out.
It's not very far from the railroad tracks, but you can't, you can't work.
Good steady flow of water going through there just because of the number of users upstream from there, but, uh, that, uh, the amount of stuff in there did, uh, did, uh, concern me a little bit that it does need to get. So I didn't know if that was an option that we wanted to, to look at or if you want me to literally get an easement from the, the folks, uh, there that.
I can see where that's going, Byron, I can see where that's going already.
Ah, sure.
No, I don't think so.
Actually, you'd have to physically kind of build something to, to get a truck down in there to back that out.
Yeah.
I mean, the vac truck is seventy, eighty thousand pound truck, I mean, it's just. So I just thought maybe if we worked with the Fire Department, we could drag a hose down through the golden rod and get down there and maybe flush it out and clean it up that way.
As long as we don't plug the other one.
Well, you gotta start at the outlets.
It's a fire team thing.
Slowly, slowly loosen that stuff up and flush it out. Is that something that we could get together on? I can take you down there on a Wednesday night or something and, and take a look at it and, you know, do it on a Wednesday night or something that it's not pouring rain or something, then, okay? Oh, we'll, I'll work with you on that one, Chris.
Thank you.
Roadside mowing is completed and the landfill will be completed tomorrow. It's almost done, about two hours left on the landfill to mow that.
Looks good, thank you.
And then the tractor will head for Clarendon. I will like to mention, um, and for further discussion in October when we get to budgets, um, if any of you, uh, listened to any of the other select board meetings, July twenty-second, the Clarendon Select Board, asked if, if their road commissioner would consider, um, approaching Rutland Town and, uh, buying out their half, buying out our half of the tractor. I don't think they're a hundred percent happy with the amount of mowing that's done. They still have got a lot of roads down there that haven't been mowed yet.
This is a tractor we co-owned with Clarendon.
Correct.
Where does it, where's it stored? Do we keep it over there?
Here in, in the covered bridge in the wintertime and, uh, and whoever's using it stores it at such time that they're, that they're using it.
If they did approach us about it, what's your thoughts on that?
Uh, I'm all for it.
You are?
What would we use for mowing?
Uh, we need to discuss that.
Okay.
That's why I just, I wasn't looking for a major discussion tonight, just thought I would just get that in the back.
Add that to our, second thing to our highway budget, highway.
Don't worry about it, I think budget time is the more appropriate time to think about it and discuss it, that it doesn't need to be trashed at, at this point.
Okay.
All of our stuff is, as the McKinley Avenue washout ditching has been sent to FEMA. The last thing we're working on is the admin money. Um, they do pay up to five percent of the total cost of the project for admin and I've got just a couple more documents, uh, to get to them in regard to that and that will be, I think, all we need to do, so maybe by later this fall, I don't know, we'll end up with an actual check for reimbursement there. Uh, the trailer that was, uh, bid out, um, will be delivered tomorrow, the old trailer. I just took it upon myself and put it on Craigslist on Friday afternoon and I had it sold Saturday, the next day.
What do we get for it?
That trailer's gonna get dragged to Texas and, uh, gonna be used to pick up a truck and drag it back from Texas.
Okay.
How much?
Real happy with it.
How much?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred?
Which is about half the cost of a new one. And that trailer was a nineteen, what'd they say it was?
I'm sorry, hold on.
Ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-seven.
On TV.
Renting, uh, we'll be renting a small excavator, um, as of Friday and, uh, getting a whole bunch of small, little inexpensive projects and we'll have those done. Um, I took it for a month, I'm hoping to have maybe, um, a couple of days out of that time period, um, when, if we get projects caught up that I can, um, do a little bit of work for Mike and all.
Is that the, you're gonna do that little seward road thing that we talked about?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great, okay, good.
Uh, next meeting, um, I got a structures grant to do the, uh, engineering for the, uh, culvert replacement on Town Line Road and we put out the bid for engineering services. Uh, those bids will be in at your next select board meeting, we'll open the bids that night. And then my other question is, um, where are we at with Andres and stormwater and projects that need to be done? Do we have any MS four projects that need to be done this year?
Do you wanna check in with Andres for us, Bill?
I know one of the projects was a retrofit on that, uh, uh, stormwater pond on, uh, the Windmere development, which, um, you know, is prompting us to think about taking the road so you'd have access to the stormwater thing, but I don't know where we are with that.
We'll get an answer.
Whenever, yep. Um, and then there was the, uh, discussion at some point about all the emails I included in your pack.
Yeah.
Have you started the new six to two shifts yet?
What?
Early shift.
Six AM to two shifts.
Yep, that's working out fine.
Okay, good.
So Byron, um, they haven't put the final markings down on Route Seven, obviously, they're getting the finished code on. They're getting their finished code on. Do we, can we have any input with what they marked there or they're just gonna go ahead and put them back?
Permanent markings?
Yeah.
At this point, and now is the time, if you've got suggestions or whatever. Because those were temporary markings and particularly interested in the East Pittsford Road intersection. And they wanted to see how, I think, how traffic was gonna be merging and that kind of thing.
Well, my concern is, is if you drive up Route seven, right by Bob Moore's driveway, there's a big orange sign that says right lane ends.
Yep.
Sixty feet from that is a big white sign that shows two lanes. A left lane with a straight, with an arrow, and a right lane straight with an arrow. Those are conflicting terminology and they need to correct that. The other thing, when they did the temporary markings, they had that right-hand lane marked as a through traffic plus a right-hand, those combination arrows.
Uh, that's for, yeah, the right turn lane at Post Road.
Right. I think they need to do away with that. Get rid of the straight arrows because they're encouraging traffic to stay into that right lane until they go through that intersection and then you get that crowding.
And if they don't move it east, right in front of Ed's Country Store, I've already seen three people using that to pass on the right. They got, they need to move that whole configuration east so that when East Pittsford Road merges out, there's not, nothing but a shoulder there.
Okay, so, yeah, and I think some of that shoulder's coming out.
Okay.
From what I heard, and will be grassed over.
'Cause right now, the way it's so wide, people assume it's just another lane. And they don't see that short, little...
So I'll call Tim in the morning and find out where they are with that.
You know, my concern is...
What they have, have they come up with for...
If we need to have a site visit there, we can, Byron.
Okay.
We wanna get together.
My concern is, is that they're, they're, the conflicting signage. And then the fact that if you put those straight arrows, once you go through the post-road intersection, technically you're in a right turn lane. And they need to get everybody over in that left lane.
Should, at this point, should we just try to schedule a site visit with this gentleman you're referring to? Just ask him, hey, say the board has some questions and we'd like to meet you there and see?
I can.
They must have some drawings or some prints that show the markings.
Yes, but they did these, see initially, they weren't gonna do any temporary markings. They were only gonna use the RPMs. And then when the final top coat went down, they would do the final. But then they decided that they would do that temporary marking up as far as East Pittsford Road was painted and see how traffic reacted to that.
No, I know.
Didn't react any better than it did before.
And then they were gonna make adjustments from there. Anything that I've seen in watching traffic, most of the time, traffic is moving over in that, in that pinch point, as you call it.
Yeah.
And they're moving to the left to get into the left lane. So they, they know now that they're gonna go straight through. And then there's a few cars in the right lane that either turn right on Post Road or continue up and go to East Pittsford Road.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what I've been noticing.
I just had an incident the other day where, you know, you watch, I, 'cause I've been trying, every time I go there to see how traffic handles. And a pickup truck in that right lane, you know, passed five cars on the right and then cut them all off to, you know. And that's my concern because the actual markings tell them he can go straight in that lane. And it should be just right turn.
The markings at the light.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I'll call Tim and see if he wants a meeting or if they've actually are...
Yeah, they should look at the sign, the fixed signs too because like I said, they're conflicting signs.
Okay. Anything else?
Anything for Byron?
Water sewer meeting coming up, just to announce. Or you gotta cover that somewhere else.
No, please do.
Yeah.
When, uh, when was that for?
If I don't look it up on my phone, I don't know.
Friday morning at ten o'clock on...
Ten AM Friday.
Ten AM, yeah.
That's on Ranbury Road.
Ranbury Road.
It's to meet with the landowners and to review the plans with Robert Clark of Otter Creek Engineering.
It's a highway, it's a water sewer.
For the extension of the water line down there.
It looks like a nice day, so it should be a...
Good.
Yeah. A short meeting. I gotta go home and shake hay.
Alright Byron, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chris Clark, town fire chief.
What are they doing?
How are you, chief?
I'm doing good. How are you?
Great. Busy couple weeks.
It's been very busy. A lot of mutilate. Went to a pretty bad house fire in West Rutland last week, Thursday. Pretty sure it was a total loss in my eyes. Uh, Sunday, we went to Clarendon for another structure fire, not nearly as bad. Uh, they did a good stop. Uh, today, we had another pretty serious car accident. I had to extricate a lady. So on that note, our tools are getting extremely old. Our pump is not working correctly.
That's the original one, isn't it?
It is.
The one on three?
It's been the GT's Agway, whatever that's called down there, a couple times. They say it's fixed. It worked today, but it's almost time to start thinking of new tools.
Is it the pump, Chris, or is it the motor? That little Honda having trouble?
Don't know. Don't know. All's I know is, what were those, like nineteen ninety-five?
Ninety-five or six, so that pump's twenty-three years old. That's the original one.
So we're talking about extrication tools?
Yeah.
Correct.
The HERS setup?
The HERS setup, yeah. You know, not like we're gonna buy them right now, but we'd like to...
Start planning for it, yeah. Well, budget, your budget planning's coming up.
Yeah, that's a pretty...
I remember when we first got those.
Yeah, nineteen, it was ninety-six.
You're gonna get some, start to get some preliminary prices, chief.
We are. I already talked to MSA guy and we're gonna start extrication training in the next couple weeks. So he's gonna come up and bring some demo tools and...
Would you just stay with a HERS system or are you thinking about upgrading the whole?
Um, I'm kind of thinking battery operated. And keeping the tools we have in engine three and putting down here 'cause they have hydraulic.
Yeah.
We'll have a set of each is my thought. I mean, I haven't seen any...
See how they work.
Battery tools yet, but...
Yeah, if they have the same cutting and spreading forces and stuff, yeah. Yeah, it's good, you know, if you're gonna do some research now, it's time to do it.
Okay, what else you have for us, chief?
That's all I got.
We gonna, in September, we gonna schedule another building committee meeting?
We can. I haven't picked a date.
Okay. Yeah.
The day you guys like?
McKinley Avenue replacement.
Okay, gotcha. Uh, you're, you're leading the committee, so whatever you come up with, well, who can be there, we'll be there.
All right, I'll let you know at the next meeting then.
Yeah, we wanna stay, you know, stay moving down the field, you know, on this, so...
We do.
Anything else for the chief? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ed Dumas, town police chief. Everything all right down there?
Separate the back.
Just have a little fun. It has nothing to do with...
It's like Venus.
We'd expect nothing less from you. Chief Dumas, how are you tonight?
Oh, thank you.
Good. We're gonna give you our full attention.
Night, Ted.
All of us.
Everyone in the room.
So, gah.
I think you speak to you, Mr. Ruff.
Ted just gave me a text and our truck will be here tomorrow. Push bumper and put that on and probably hopefully by the end of the week, we may at least have it here. Then I guess we're gonna recruit Bill and try to get things put on.
Hmm.
Good.
Cool. That's exciting. Uh, chief Clark, when's the other truck coming? Do we know?
So, is this a truck or a Wally wagon?
Your definition is it's a Wally wagon.
Okay.
For those who don't know, a Wally wagon, according to our select member, is a four-door truck, not a two-door truck.
That's a Wally wagon?
That's what he considers a yes.
Does this have a cab or does it have a back, like a, or is it open bed?
Open bed. Has a, like a Tonto cover of some sort of...
There's no cab.
Correct.
Coming from the guy that buys only single cabs that you can no longer buy, by the way, at this point.
You really gotta look.
They're discontinued.
Yeah, you really gotta look.
Yeah.
No, four-door is the way to go.
The other thing, we had forty-six calls for service. We're pretty busy.
Pretty busy a couple weeks.
Yeah. Since Officer Riley's been on board, our calls have increased in...
Funny how that works.
We knew that was kinda...
So, to have propensity to attract trouble for some reason. I'm not quite sure if that works.
And, and in all fairness, the agency assists have increased as well.
Yes, they have. All right, yes, they have.
I like, I like that we continue to, we're getting, for those who aren't active on Facebook, we're getting a ton of traction on the press releases that Chief Dumas and Teddy come out with. And we put them on the Facebook page and they're very, very popular.
We just did one today and again, it was Ted talking about the fire department, how we all responded. He did ambulance, Rutland Town Fire, where elderly man hit the telephone pole. And, but there's, he said, I believe in the press releases, no drugs or alcohol related at this point in time. Asked the public for any information, saw something, give us a call.
Is that the one this afternoon?
Yes. Earlier this afternoon, or this morning, yeah. Yep.
That was a gentleman driving that truck? Okay. Okay. Good traffic control at that site. Those guys got a lot of training in that. They can set cones up faster than anybody. Yeah.
What else can we for chief?
We had our first candidate last week for the SRO position. We interviewed one of our current part-time officers, Jim Gamble, and we have the rest of them tomorrow. I'm hoping that my police committee will be here.
At what time it?
It starts at nine and come around, yeah.
Stay late.
I didn't know it.
To read your email.
Tell it to Pete Homage.
Yes. Sure.
Is anybody allowed to come to that?
Yeah, you can.
That I work where that person might be working?
You can sit in, yep, there. I don't mind. I wouldn't say it's open to the gen, I wouldn't say it's open to the public per se, but...
That's not...
I, I know we had, we've offered, uh, the two, uh, are invited and they're part of the conversation. So...
I didn't know if that was okay if I chose...
I don't mind. Okay. I think that's about all I have.
Speed cart has been down on Creek Road, right smack in front of my house. I thought it was going down my barnyard. Thank you, JP.
How did that happen?
Appreciate that.
We gotta move it though, for the school.
School's coming up.
That's fine.
Well, this weekend, I'll be moving it up to Post Road.
And that was the plan, to move it around town and find out what was going on. And so, great, thanks very much.
Are they slowing down?
No.
Okay, I can bring it here and you can download it and...
Or have...
They go by it, they go by it as fast as they can go in two.
Yeah.
One question, when it was by your house, were the numbers easily read?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause it might have been where it was in the shade up there on Grove Street.
No, it wasn't that at all. When, when we took it over and Bill and I went through it, it was set at its lowest dim setting, so we just cranked it up to the highest visibility.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say when, when you, when...
Couldn't see it.
Couldn't, yeah, I couldn't read with the act, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So it was just...
All taken care of.
All righty, perfect.
Anything for the chief?
Nope, see you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from the town health officer?
Uh, no, but we will have a couple of things for, in the next month or two, developing. People's dogs continue to bite themselves, bite the owners. I'm so amazed by that. I mean, I've had twelve dog bite reports.
Wow.
And only two of them were of strangers. The other ten were of the owners.
So the owners call you on their dogs biting them?
No, the vet in the hospital are mandated reporters. They have to call me.
Oh, okay.
So, no, I don't think the owners are embarrassed, obviously, some of them.
Yeah, that's, uh...
And you still have to investigate them?
No, but I have to report on it.
You have to put a...
And I have to make sure the shots are up to date.
Yes.
But when it's the owner's dog, it's...
Yeah, really.
Well, the other thing is, and I don't even know if this is in my jurisdiction, but there have been some employee complaints of mold up at the mall, about employees having to work in conditions of mold.
I got one this weekend that came out, although the camera's closed, but they said that you can literally look inside the cage, it came out and you can see the mold climbing up the walls.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I'm gonna contact the state tomorrow and see, 'cause I'm pretty sure that's a state permit and they would be the ones that come down. They told me with hotels and stuff like that, that's their bailiwick and so they don't need my services there. But I'll figure that out and I'll let you know. That's all I have, thanks.
I got through the floors?
Pardon me?
It's the humidity in the building because they're cutting services and we've had a hot, humid summer and molds thrive.
And they've had a dozen floods from their system that they haven't really cleaned up, as far as I know. Lot of water up there.
If any of you can remember, this is how the other mall deteriorated.
It's the way it was.
You know, it started with roof leaks and closing doors and then, you know, one open and this and the other. And it's a shame because this building isn't that old, but it's, it's the same life cycle of mall.
Order me a gavel for the next meeting, Bill, would you please? Thank you.
Score guns.
We'll have one here for the next meeting.
It's pretty distracting with you guys carrying on. We're trying to do business.
We'll have to separate them like they did in school.
Perhaps.
Um, all right, John, what else? Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have, thanks.
Water and, uh, let's see, building committee, we updated, right?
Yeah.
Water and sewer committee, anything there?
Uh, no, just our meeting coming up. I'm just double checking.
Yeah, we reviewed the plans for the...
With Robert Clark.
Water main and we're getting closer.
Then Byron reported on, oh, the manholes. We will be rebuilding two of them on Windcrest Road.
Oh, good. Is, besides for me, a few weeks ago, did anyone talk to Dave Losby? Or was I supposed to talk, communicate back with him? I guess I will. Okay, he'll be excited, he'll be excited to hear that, so... All right, very good.
Barring any complications.
Um, anything for the police committee meeting update?
Um, just that we had talked about the Act Two-Fifty, the mall situation and the police. And we now have the information that we can use to go over it. And I guess my question is, what do we, what do we wanna do? Remember, our chief suggested that we at least consider maybe taking over the policing services at the mall for the same cost. And it's kind of there and that's an open question.
Yeah, it's still pending. We're waiting to get some feedback from Kevin on that, aren't we?
I think so. Yeah, I mean, he did, he did email us.
Does anybody have a chance to read this stack of stuff?
No, that's, actually, that was on something else. I skimmed through it. I mean, there's definitely things in there and, you know, and changes were anticipated, but the town is always, um, it, there's a section of the Act Two-Fifty standards that require, that we look at, that any applicant look at the impact on municipal services, including police services. So, I mean, that is clearly, and there have been various changes and there was quite a lengthy contract that we did in the nineties with them concerning policing services. So I haven't gone over it in great detail, but I guess next step probably would be to ask Kevin.
Uh, I'd ask Mary if the board is in agreement to have the conversations with Kevin because I'm gonna...
Do you want to?
Not be in discussion of Act Two-Fifty issues.
Oh, 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 you can't. Yes, okay.
If the board's in agreement, we'll have Mary talk to Kevin.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, anything further out of committee meetings?
That's it.
Okay. We've handled A, B, C, D, board to discuss stormwater on US Route 7 South. Was that, is that in regular, this Friday's committee meeting down there?
That's all those.
The email exchanges.
That's something that we might want to, maybe just, I don't know.
Yeah, I sort of forgot, we forgot to talk to you about this Byron, when you were up here.
It's that email you entered, and I don't know if we want to talk about that, um, as public knowledge at this time, because it was kind of, we don't know what's going on down there. And it may be related to some other stuff that.
Yeah, at this time, we can just put on a file, it can be.
Yeah, I, I think it was exactly that, just information, we knew something might be going on concerning stormwater down there because of a possible private development, so we wanted to make sure people were aware, that the town was interested, the town had looked at projects down there and had done some preliminary work, and I think that's just where we leave it, right?
Well, I, you know, I thought it would be appropriate from my standpoint, in ways to, for someone, pardon me, the board chairman, just to reach out to the client's engineers, let them know that.
Yes.
And that hasn't been done.
Okay.
No.
All right, and I think that was discussed, didn't we discuss that at the water sewer committee?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I'd be happy to, if the board would like.
That'd be great, thank you.